I'll call this regular council meeting in the Village of Graham and Anne to order. It's 7:33 PM, and we'll open with prayer this evening.
So Father, we just thank you that your word says that your wisdom is first pure and peaceable. So now we just ask tonight, as we just talk over things that are probably well over my head, God, but for the purpose of this community, God, we just ask that your wisdom lead, your wisdom guide, God, your peace be in all the conversation that is going here tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things for opening remarks. I think everybody has managed to survive the cold that we had this weekend, and I think most people have their water back from what I've seen and heard around. Some people maybe not so much. I think when you compare ourselves to other communities, we made out rather well, particularly as far as power outages went. I was in conversation with the CAO Friday night when the power was off, just to see if we were going to have to open the community center as a warming station. And I think if nothing else, it highlights the importance of making sure we have some backup generators here and we have the available if it's needed. Hopefully, we won't have temperatures like that again for a while. I did want to highlight the fact that we are part of the Project Village Car Share with Eastern Charlotte Waterways, and we now have an electric vehicle up at the Coastal Transport Ticket Office. There is, it's available to rent. There's a link on our Facebook page if anyone is interested. And I'd like to thank Coastal for helping us get that set up and have the, providing a location for it to be. Finally, I wanted to recognize that we had four recipients on the island of the Queen Elizabeth II Platinum Jubilee Medal. It was, the medal was created to honor the Queen and her lifelong service to Canada, as well as those residents of New Brunswick who, like Her Majesty, have been exemplary in their service to others. And so Tuesday night, the Lieutenant Governor was here along with our MLA Andrea Anderson-Mason, and they recognized Ken Ingersoll, Mike Monroe, Susan Ballantyne, and Andrew Jones. And I'd like to congratulate them on behalf of council and thank them for their contributions to the community. So with that, I would ask if there's any disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the minutes from our regular council meeting of January 9th, '23. You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I will second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Number six is additions to the agenda. I have one addition. It's a bill to pay from the General Operating Fund. South Bay Construction, it's for the CND site, for $3,059.
I have, I want to add the Seal Cove Breakwater Road corner. Traffic issue.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes.
To add votes to those items?
I am.
Heard the motion by Counselor Turner. Do we have a seconder?
A second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'd suggest the Seal Cove Breakwater Corner be 14.4 under new business. And that brings us up to number seven, which is the RSCMP report. If you, the microphone's right over there if you want to go there. Thank you.
So files from January 2023, 78 files, in comparison to January 2022, which we had 55 files. 19 files were cleared with charges laid or recommended. 11 were traffic files, which is 24% higher, quite higher. Without the traffic files, we'd have 10%. Three assault files, two break-in enters or unlawfully being in a dwelling. Two failed to comply with conditions. Five frauds. Two mental health calls. Six mischiefs. Six thefts with three charges laid. Six collisions. 19 other traffic reports or tickets. That is all.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any questions or we? Thank you. We are off the hook. You got it off easy tonight. Remember that at the next traffic stop. All right. Number nine, Old Business Hospice of Charlotte. CAO Rayner to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. After the January meeting, we had the request from Hospice of Charlotte for some financial support. I did reach out to them to ask what their level of involvement is on Graham and Anne, and I haven't heard anything back yet. So really, nothing to update other than that, so.
Questions or comments? Just, yes.
Bearing hearing back from them that they have involvement here, I would move that we set this issue aside.
Heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I have a second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 9.2 is Regional Service Commission update, and that is me. So with the new mandates for the Regional Service Commission, the board has been meeting a bit more frequently. In addition to our regular monthly board meeting, we've added a committee, the whole meeting, to the two weeks prior. The focus has been on setting up committees for each of the pillars to come up with a strategic plan for each of them. And so after some discussion on committee composition, there was agreement that there would be a representative from each of the communities within the Service Commission. So I'm looking for some input for, for people to sit on the Regional Service Commission committees. There's economic development, community development, recreation, transportation, and public safety. And I missed tourism because it was on the other page when I printed it. Thank you. So basically, the concept is each of those committees will come up with a strategic plan for the region. That plan will then go back to the board for approval, but it was felt by having someone from each community, it would give a broader-based composition. And I know one of the concerns around this table has been how Graham and Anne as a whole fits into the overall region, simply because of our geography. We're not, it's a little bit more challenging for us. So I think, I don't think it's going to be a huge time commitment. I expect some of it can be done through virtual meetings. That's how most of the RSC meetings are, is over Zoom, or you can attend in person. But I think it would be good to have people who are interested in each of those things from Graham and Anne and willing to sort of take Graham and Anne's voice and see how we can feed into the overall bigger picture. So any questions, comments? Counselor Green?
Reading the announcement in the paper of the funding coming out, would it, I think we're going to have to have people involved in those committees in order to sing our, put our cases forward for funding, I'm guessing? Is that the way it works?
Potentially funding or potentially like just what the overall strategy is on the tourism side, if it's a tourism promotion, to make sure that there is some inclusion of Graham and Anne and whatever that promotion would be. Really, it's, we're working with a blank slate on all of these things. So it's up to the committees to sort of develop some sort of plan going forward. It will ultimately be approved by the board. And I think the other piece of this is whatever the strategy is, the RSC is responsible for paying for it, which ultimately means it's divided out between the eight communities that are sitting around the table, and ultimately, we will have a percentage of that. So it's, it's having the ability to, it's a lot like sitting here, having the ability to have a great plan, knowing what you want, but also being realistic about what the dollars you may have to work with are. So the thought was, this takes some of the pressure off the eight of us who are sitting around at the board level, because there's obviously a lot of work going into all of these things, and it's a way to spread some of that responsibility around. In my mind, it makes sense to have someone from the committees that we do have that would jump into some of those, and then that leaves us with a couple. That we don't necessarily have those committees here, but that would be my suggestion off the bat. So I don't know if anybody else has comments or thoughts, or have I explained this as clear as mud, because that's how I feel about this some days? Counselor Boyd?
Are they looking for members from every council in the region to be present on each of those committees?
Yes, so each committee will have eight people.
Are you looking for input now? Raise your hand now, or just?
I was gonna say, I would like input. If you are comfortable with me choosing people, I can do that too. If you want to leave it with me, if you want to volunteer or whatever while we're sitting here, I'm, I'm okay either way, but I didn't want to just start handpicking people without at least bringing it here and seeing if there is interest in what people are thinking.
Well, I'd be interested in the transportation part of it. Very interested.
I have a winner? Very good.
But that's probably it.
And I would be interested in economic development.
Thank you.
And I think maybe we should reach out to tourism for that position, maybe? I don't know how everyone feels about that, but they've, they've been very active, so.
I would, I would take, I don't, it doesn't matter. I don't think they have a solid base on that one.
I'd say, how do you feel about community development? Sure.
Perfect. And that leaves us recreation and public safety.
Public safety, I guess. Seems to be where I get set on every organization I get involved with, so, yeah.
So I guess that leaves me with rec.
Thank you all for volunteering so cheerfully. This was great. And if it's okay with the group, I do like the idea of reaching out to the Tourism Association and seeing if they have someone, if that's okay. Thank you all, and I'll try to keep the updates coming. I think it's going to be a really busy time at the RSC and a lot of stuff happening, so whether it's by email or here formally, I'll try to keep the updates coming. It's sometimes like watching paint dry, and then all of a sudden, a lot of things happen, so. All right, so that was 9.2. Number 10 is the 10-minute open session. Okay. And that would take us down to new business. 14.1 is the Charlotte County Fair sponsorship request. I believe that letter's in your meeting package. We received a letter looking for sponsorship of the Charlotte County Fair, and just looking for input, which I don't have. Perfect. The fair is, this will be the 12th Annual I. It's held the fall of '23, September 16 to 17.
Was there a dollar amount with that?
Nope.
No, I didn't see one, so.
Counselor Boyd?
Did we get asked last year? I can't remember. I feel like this is a first, at least in our mandate.
It is the first I've seen this.
Ever? Like, have you?
Ever.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe let me word it this way. Is there any interest in sponsoring the Charlotte County Fair? I, I have to say, I'm a little hesitant, given our sponsorship of Island Fest here and some of the other activities that we do sponsor locally. I think it might be a bit more appropriate for us to direct our funds that way. And I'm seeing some nodding, so Counselor Turner?
I'm just wondering if maybe we should, at some point, just let, like, put it out that it's happening, so that if people wanted to have like a booth or something, you know, that there could be community participation if they wanted to, even if we weren't sponsoring.
Maybe we could write back and ask if there is an opportunity for that and share it on our Facebook page. Is that fair? Very good. 14.2, Irving Oil vacant properties. Counselor Layton?
It's been brought to my attention, I guess, Urban Oil owns three properties on the island. All are abandoned. Specifically, the one in Castalia adjacent to the mailboxes. There's approximately 100 people use that mailbox, and the property is completely full of potholes, frozen over, and it's a, it's a safety hazard for a lot of our elderly community members that pick up their mail there. My thoughts, I know how long things take to, to pull off, but my thing is, let's take a couple of loads of gravel up there and level it off, fix it up, maybe get permission from Urban Oil. I realize that it's not our property, and it's not normally, we don't normally fix other people's property up, but that's a community hub, and I think it's important that it's safe. Urban Oil has a beautification program that they use throughout New Brunswick, and it would be great if they would focus some of their interests on those abandoned properties here, maybe plant some trees, maybe we could help maintain it, maybe partnership in some way. But I'm just looking for maybe staff to reach out to Urban Oil and possibly get permission to at least, if they won't spend the money, get permission for us to spend the money in a timely manner to get that situation fixed for our elderly people that pick up their mail. But in the long term, I'd like to see them fix up the three properties that are abandoned, and there are holes in our community. They used to be a hub, and now they're just a paved parking lot, kind of. It isn't even paved, but. So maybe I can make a motion, direct in staff to reach out to Urban Oil and include us, if possible, in any other beautification projects. Is that enough to, I'd like to go further with, I'd like to get this, those potholes fixed, if possible. And I know we do maintain other properties owned by other people that we maintain, so I don't understand. Just hopefully, we can find a resolution and get some gravel there in a timely manner, I guess.
So your motion is to reach out to Irving about their beautification program over the long term?
Yes.
And in the short term?
Get permission to, either they fix up their property or a partnership with them and put a couple loads of gravel. It's not a lot of, it's not a big ticket item, but it's an important one.
Heard the motion by Counselor Layton. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question?
Canda Post, you say by the, by the mailboxes there?
Yes.
Is Canda Post involved there?
Canda Post's involved, and they have it, from what I understand, a 10-foot right-of-way or permission in front of the mailboxes. It's one swipe with the plow, and that's, that's what they maintain, and that's all they have to maintain. So the rest is, it's, it's a mess. It's a mess.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could fix it and Irving could pay for it. Might be something we could look into.
I agree. I think it's, it's just important that it gets done sooner than later, I think.
Any other questions? Counselor Toll, and then Counselor Green?
I just wonder if, I know Canda Post only fixes part of it because we have the same problem too with our mailbox, but if we're going to fix one of them, I'm sure all of them could stand to have, all the mailboxes and all the Irving Rivers could stand to have some fixing. I know where our mailbox is. It's a mess too, so.
Well, I was approached by three people that get their mail in Castalia, and I don't know about the rest of them, but probably I should have looked, but if there's an issue with any of them, we should, I mean, it's a hub, it's part of our community, and there's...
Maybe if we went to Canda Post and just asked if they could fix them all, at least the part that, because I'm sure they're all in the same state. You get the cars turning the same way, and you always end up with that same little pothole right there in front of the mailboxes.
I agree, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I'm not sure if I quite agree with us spending money on other people's property without, we had the same type of an issue at Southwest Head Lighthouse last year about this time. And once the property owner was made aware of the situation, they stepped up in a timely manner and made it happen, I would be a lot more comfortable with our taking action would have to be with their permission or after their permission, in my opinion.
Any other question? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded?
Aye.
Motion carried. 14.3, Village Office Door Locks. Counselor Boyd to address.
Now it's on. Maybe it was on the whole time. I don't know. All right. So as we know, it was recently brought to the attention of Mayor Morris and staff that both doors to the village office had shared keys with the rest of the building, and that anyone that's ever held a key for the community center had access to the office and all its contents. The decision was made by staff to change the locks immediately. After speaking with the CAO, the new locks aren't the best, as every time you go in and out, you have to press the button on the back again, and so if you forget, then they're still kind of open to anybody. I'd like to see both access points of the village office accessible by key fob system similar to that of the fitness center. That way, it's tracked by who comes in and out. You can see who used the fob at what time. I also believe that this door in the back of the hallway should just be locked, other than staff. I, I don't think that needs to be a public access point. I think this is our front door to the village office, and then that should just be for staff only, whether it be the CAO or rec staff going in and out to the arena. I know several of our staff members used the fitness center at their lunch hour, so in and out through that way. So I would like to see that one, just staff-only access there, and a fob system at both ends. And I think that the front door should also remain locked with an entry buzzer at the front desk. There has been some incidents in the past where staff have been rushed by upset residents, and while I think that our residents should be able to have access, I don't think the staff's safety should be put at risk. I know this is not all the time, but it has happened in the past. Perhaps having to knock on the door and be allowed in may help cooler heads prevail. And I do think that our staff do a bang-up job, but they do have only so many hours in the day, and when there's people constantly cycling through, I feel like they're burdened with having to make time for everybody that comes in, because that's what they want to do. And I think we need to move more towards making appointments to meet with the CAO, to meet with the treasurer, to meet with the mayor, whomever. And, and I'm sure, and staff can, can, correct me if I'm wrong, if Trish showed up, resident Trish showed up and wanted to speak with CAO Rayner over something, I expect that Esme could probably look and say, well, he's busy right now, but he can come back in half an hour. Like, it's probably not much of a chance for them ever to say, well, no, it's going to be three weeks before you can see Chris. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. And so in saying that, I would move that the two entrances of the village office be set up with a fob system to better aid in the staff's ability to safely and efficiently do their jobs and to protect the sensitive materials that are housed in the village office.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Brown. Question?
Question?
Counselor Layton, and I see Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons has leaned forward, so start.
All the important information is locked up under lock and key or behind a lock door, regardless if, if that's open or not? No?
All our files are accessible. If you can get in here, you can get to our files.
Okay.
There's a lot of keys floating around. Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons?
So it is, you said something about the outside door too?
No, no, just this.
No, just this one here. That's all, okay.
Counselor Turner?
So are we saying we'd have this door locked during office hours?
That's what I proposed, but I mean, it's, it's open for discussion, but just it'd be a matter of somebody coming to knock on the door and whoever's sitting at the front desk and buzz them in, or, or not.
Counselor Layton?
I don't really agree with that. I think this is a community, I think people should be able to make themselves available to the village office at any time, instead of knocking and just, I don't know, I don't know. I just think it's, it's not very welcoming if you got to knock on the door and the door's locked. People aren't going to feel very welcome to coming in, but I totally agree with the key fob 100%, but that's after hours, I think, not when staff is present.
We can set that fob to lock at four. You can set those, because I don't think they should come up to you there all day.
I can't knock every time I come through that door.
What we've always said about municipal government, we're closest to our people and most accessible. And to have, the thought of having the door locked seems to fly in the face of that, the fob issue, you know, it's a little technology. And for people making appointments, that is probably where we should be, but there's always going to be that person that finally catches someone here or thinks about it at the right time, and they're here, and if it's convenient for staff to deal with them, that is, or to tell them to come back in half an hour tomorrow morning or whatever, I think we have to be accessible, and locking the door would be an affront to that, in my opinion. So if this is a two-forked motion, I can support the fob issue, but I really don't want to see the doors locked. Sorry.
Counselor Boyd?
Well, can I make an amendment to that motion, then? To say that we go to the fob system, keep this door locked at all times, and this one to be locked at the end of office hours?
Or if no one's in the office?
If no one's in the office, like if it's lunch break and everybody happens to be gone, then it's just a, I don't know all the ins and outs of it. I know Chris and staff are quite familiar with the fob system at the fitness center, so.
I think putting a staff-only sign on the outside of that would help too. For people that are used to just walking in, at least it'll say, this is how it is now.
Okay, so I have a motion from Counselor Boyd to his motion, and I believe Counselor Brown seconded. Are you okay with that amendment? Any more questions on the motion? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14.4 is the Seal Cove Breakwater Corner. Counselor Turner?
I think everybody knows the corner I'm speaking of. When you come down the Seal Cove Breakwater Road, it's the one right at the bottom as you continue down the hill. A lot of people now seem to think because that newer Breakwater is directly ahead, that they have the right-of-way because it's straight. And when you're coming from the other Breakwater over, they come just flying down past that house. You don't see them until they're there. And it's, I've had several close encounters, and if I've had that many, I can only imagine how many are actually taking place. And with the feed storage there and the shoreland trucks coming and going all the time, I'm just afraid that one of these days, one of those trucks is going to be coming and somebody flies down through there, and, I mean, those guys can't stop on a dime, but it's, it's pretty hairy. Coming up off the wharf, they do the same, but at least you can see them. I mean, it's a big, wide, you know, entrance to the wharf there. You're gonna, I mean, you still may say, well, I've got the right-of-way, I'm going, but at least you can see them. But when they're coming down past the house, they can catch you off-guard, and because they think they're just going straight, they're, you know, they're not, they're not touching their brakes, nothing, they're just heading down. So my suggestion, I don't know what's proper, but I think we should reach out to DTI, ask them if there's anything that could be done, like maybe a yield sign with a straight arrow, so they know they don't have to yield if they're going around the corner. Or even, you know, if there was a white line around, I'm using all the hand motions here, but around that corner, so that you can see this is where the road goes, and probably just some public information, like maybe on Facebook or something, but it's, it's tricky.
So are you making a motion to reach out to DTI?
I am making a motion that we reach out to DTI.
You heard the motion from Counselor Turner. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question?
So this is what we do. Our CAO will get hold of... So, this is what we do. Our C A O. will get ahold of D T I and figure this out.
I, my recollection from when we talked about speed zones is that they have certain standards for signage and other things, so I think to have, get them to have a look at it and provide their recommendations, because we can't change signage on that road without their permission, so that's the next logical step. Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Fifteen one is the Transportation Committee Report. Counselor Layton?
Thank you. Fellow councilors, Madam Mayor, I haven't had a report for the last couple of meetings, but definitely a lot's been going on behind the scenes. Our road maintenance tender, Coastal Enterprises, will complete their contract of providing bush cutting and ditching this week. There's been a few deficiencies identified by our engineer, Dave Stees, but generally, the work has been top-quality. The operators and staff have represented their company well and respectful to people's property. I've gained a lot of insight about our roads, every culvert, ditch, waterway, whatever's going on. I know what the problem is, and there's a lot more problems identified than I ever thought there was. The work completed, sorry. Some places, you can notice the ditches we've done ditching, other places we skipped ditching. We never had a lot of money. We had so much money to do ditching, and we have identified all the critical drainage areas, and all of those have been fixed as of in the next couple of days. So, I'm some glad it's over with. Coastal will be leaving in the next couple of days, and our island will be much safer, and a safer infrastructure, and we thank them for that. D T I, our committee has spent a lot of time on this file. Our progress in putting together a potential contract between the Village of Grammontan and the province of New Brunswick is close to being complete. At least, we're up to almost a draft, I think. I know I could sit here and talk about this all day long, but basically, I'm hoping this can be presented to council for discussion in the very near future, maybe before our next meeting, because it's kinda time-sensitive, but hopefully for the next meeting, we can have a presentation to put forward to council, and with your guys' approval, hopefully we can move ahead with this. I'm confident it's the best solution. I don't want to ever see a third party come in here and take over our highway system for a $2 million price tag, and our portion is half, which would be a million dollars. So I think we can do this in a very cost-effective manner, which is gonna benefit the province and the Village of Grammontan. So, without getting any further, that's where we are with that. It's been a busy file, a lot going on. Chris is a guy. He sits in that office, and it just blows my mind, but he gets paid the big bucks, and he's doing a good job, and I appreciate it. And I'm just gonna speak lightly on our fair partnership committee. We've been very active on that file. We've made a good case to the province, I think. We're very involved with Andrea, with the minister, with Paul, the department of, he's the Director of Marine Operations, but we've put together something on paper. It's sitting on a desk in friction somewhere. I don't make decisions, none of us do here at that level, but hopefully, the province can entertain our idea of giving us a few, giving us a couple more months of our Grammontan five service, but we'll see where that goes. But for now, it's in their hands, not ours, so that's a good thing. And thank you all. That's about it. That's all I have for tonight. Anything else to add? Questions, whatever. Bonnie?
Thank you, Counselor Layton. Any questions on the transportation report? Very good. We get off easy tonight, too. Sixteen one is the Procedure Bylaw. Counselor Boyd?
Okay. So, procedural bylaw changes, potential procedural bylaw changes. Since the resignation of Counselor Russell, we have been rolling along here with eight councilors. I feel that this group has meshed well together, and we have many irons, just as Counselor Layton said, in the fire that we are currently working on pushing forward. When looking at the rest of the communities within our zone, and the province really as a whole, we are certainly in the minority for council size versus community size. For example, just in our own Zone Four, St. Stephen has a council of eight. St. Andrews just went to nine with taking in Shamcook and Bayside. Campabello has four, McAdam has four, Fundy Shores is five, and Eastern Charlotte, I believe, is eight? Eight is Eastern Charlotte? Yeah. I had five, but that must be a typo. We don't have a ward system here, as some other communities do, but I feel that around this table, we represent the island fairly well. That being said, there will be a call within the next few months for provincial by-election to fill vacant seats on councils around the province. It is in my opinion that we should remain a council of eight. To do this, if it's all are in agreement, we must amend our procedural bylaw to define council as a mayor and eight councilors. It currently reads mayor and nine councilors. To make the timeline before the by-election, we would have to do the first two readings, which would be by title only, as the bylaw is quite lengthy. I believe that's correct, C A O. Rayner?
It is quite lengthy, yes.
And as well as staff would have to post the appropriate advertisements before the next meeting. I know that we don't all do it for the money, but the budget council salary's for nine, so if we were to go with eight, the additional salary could be split between the eight, or we could put it in reserves, or donate the other salary, whatever, whatever would be the group's decision. So that being said, I would move that the bylaw committee amend the current procedural bylaw to read that a council is defined as a mayor and eight councilors, and have the title-only reading ready for our next monthly meeting.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? Counselor Green?
Having been involved in council for a number of years prior, and again, having an even number of councilors does not bode well, or didn't. It might not. It can lead to a lot of party system or whatever. So I think an odd number works better, personally. And if we were going to reduce the number, I'd be more in favor of going to seven. That means that the eight that were here, elected under the old bylaw, would stay until their term was expired, and the next time there's an election, there would only be seven vacancies. That would be my thought on that.
Counselor Brown?
I noticed that when you were saying how many councilors they had in different areas, that there were eights and fours, and they were quite evenly balanced as well. And I just wonder if that makes a difference, having nine or eight.
Well, it certainly puts potentially more onus on Madam Mayor. Certainly, if anybody watched the first Eastern Charlotte council meeting a couple weeks ago, Mayor Craig had to vote on at least, yeah, two of their decisions. So, currently, the mayor refrains from voting unless there's a tie, so an odd number certainly reduces the chances of a tie. So, as Counselor Brown said, a lot of them are even numbers. If you watch any of them, or spend any time, there's not a lot of ties all the time. So, I guess it's really whatever the group feels. I feel eight is fine, but if the group would rather see an odd number, then it's majority rules, I guess.
Counselor Layton?
I just think we've got a lot going on, and I can't see it ever going down to seven people, because the workload distributed around everybody was gonna be significantly more. I think there's a hole in council without Greg here. He was very big in this council, and he played a big role. And his responsibilities has shifted on to somebody else, and if another person leaves council, then everybody's stressed out, and you don't know if it's productive. So I'd like to see it keep it exactly what we have. We have a great dynamic. I don't think we argue a lot about anything, really. We're all on the same page, basically, for most votes, I mean. So, I agree with Dan that we keep it the same, with eight councilors.
So there's a motion on the floor. Are there any more questions or comments before we vote?
I just wanted, we have to look at it as not just this council. I mean, because, yes, we, I think we're effective, and I think we do have a good, just a good vibe going here, but, you know, this is in the future, too. I don't have a problem with the eight, but I do think in making our decision, we have to be aware that it's not always gonna be like this.
Anyone else? Counselor Green?
And I believe whatever decision we make has to apply for the next two elections. We can, once we make it, we can't change it in six months or two years. We have to go through two election cycles, I believe, before we can change it again.
Okay. Are we ready for the vote? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. All right, sixteen two is C A O. bylaw, which is also Counselor Boyd.
Was that you were saying about taking up Counselor Russell's responsibilities? I am in the chair, yeah. Okay, sixteen two, potential C A O. bylaw change. The way our current procedural bylaw reads, and correct me if I'm wrong, we cannot have a council meeting without the presence of a clerk. Currently, we have a clerk and a deputy clerk on staff, but in the event that they are both unavailable, we have no way to actually meet procedurally. I met with the C A O. on this, and we looked at the Municipalities Act, and we also spoke with the Executive Director at U M M B, and I think we need to make an addition to the C A O. bylaw stating that if both the clerks are unavailable, the C A O. becomes the standby clerk. This isn't a situation that I foresee happening often, but it will cover us in the event, if it does happen. If it's not written in our bylaws, we can't do it. So, saying that, I would move more work for the bylaw committee, that the bylaw committee add that if neither clerks are available, the C A O. can be acting clerk to the C A O. bylaw.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Layton. Question? Counselor Green?
I believe if neither clerk's available, can't the group appoint a temporary clerk for that meeting? Isn't that in the Municipalities Act?
I believe, if we read it correctly, and speaking with Dan Murphy, it just says clerk in the Municipalities Act. There's no, that I've read, there's no kinda on-the-fly thing, and so this would kinda take that on-the-fly thing out, because chances are, we're never not gonna have one, two, and three here. Not here. Here. Not here. But I could be wrong on that.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Anybody else feel like we should appoint Counselor Boyd to the bylaw committee? Seventeen one is approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. Beers Neil for the 2022 surplus, $3,162.50. Dutchman Contracting, Tank House Building, $1,667.50. Atlantic Charters for the Flight de Fredericton, $3,281.81. Silk Stevens, C and D Site Monitoring, $5,227.22. Silk Stevens on the North Head dredge material, $8,690.93. Silk Stevens for the C and D Site delineation, $10,567.17. Dillon Consulting, the Rural Plan Final Bill, $6,381.35. And South Bay Construction for the C and D Site, $3,059.
I'd make a motion to pay these invoices of the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I will second it.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? Okay, I've got all kinds of questions. Counselor Brown, Counselor Green, Counselor Boyd?
We have a tank house?
It's a watershed for the fire department.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Explains our lunch meeting budget. Okay, anybody else? It's a joke. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Seventeen two, to pay from the General Capital Fund. Coastal Enterprises for the ditching project, $151,427.18. Coastal Enterprises for the ditching project, $142,642.77. Silk Stevens for the ditching project, $23,752.7. Silk Stevens for the ditching project, $17,415.18. Brunswick Engineering Airport Project, $10,671.1. Arrow Equipment Sales Limited for the 2007 International Fire Truck, $47,034.17.
I'd make a motion to pay these invoices of the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. I just want to correct, the 2007 International's actually the garbage truck, not a fire truck, just so we're clear. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Eighteen is transfers to cover these bills. Eighteen one is to transfer funds from our line of credit to the General Capital Fund to cover the airport project. I'd love to have an amount. You could actually say it if you wanted.
Want me to?
Yes. You heard a motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Eighteen two is transfer $5,786.80 from the General Operating Reserve Fund to the General Operating Fund.
I will make that motion.
Heard the motion from Counselor Toll? Counselor Greenlaw seconded. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Transfer $220,000, did I just say that right, from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund? I did say that right, didn't I? Heard the motion from Counselor Green? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. And transfer $42,652.2 from the Capital Reserve Fund to the General Capital Fund.
I'll make that motion?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Seconder? Seconded by Counselor Layton. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. So, the next item is closed session. We have seven items. Financial, Building Inspection Services, Personnel for the Building Inspector, Personnel for the Planning Advisory Committee, Property for the C and D Site, a property acquisition potentially, Financial for the Credit Union Health Center, and Financial for the Transfer Station.
I'd move, will we move into closed session?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Seconded by Counselor Toll. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Thanks, everybody.
I'll recall this regular council meeting, Village of Grammontan backed order. We were in closed session to discuss seven items. The first was Financial, Building Inspection Services.
Never remembered about Narsilvan. I move that we authorize the village- To enter into and sign an agreement with the RSC to provide building inspection services, as well as the MOU related to this event.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green, do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-2 is personnel for the building inspector.
Whereas the Village of Grammonan has contracted with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission to obtain professional building inspection services, be it resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner, Michael Joseph Kyle Hall, John Raymond Cliff, and Sherman Ralph Ross are building inspectors for the Village of Grammonan, be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner, Michael Joseph Kyle Hall, John Raymond Cliff, and Sherman Ralph Ross shall remain building inspectors for the Village of Grammonan so long as they continue in the employ of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, and be it further resolved that Keith Vernon Faulkner, Michael Joseph Kyle Hall, John Raymond Cliff, and Sherman Ralph Ross shall remain building inspectors for the Village of Grammonan so long as the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission remains contracted to provide building inspection services to the Village of Grammonan.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green, do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-3 was personnel for the planning advisory committee.
Oh, is that me again?
I think so.
It is, okay. I move that we appoint Dwayne Griffin to the PAC starting now, and his term will end on January 1st of 2026.
You heard the motion by Counselor Green, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-4 was property at the CND site, and we have no motion coming out of that, but we are continuing direction to staff to continue the negotiations with Greenfield and the Department of Environment. 19-5 was a property acquisition.
I would move that council direct staff to begin negotiations with property owners regarding a potential land acquisition at the price agreed upon in closed session.
You heard the motion by Counselor Boyd, do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Brown, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-6 was financial, credit union and health center.
I would make a motion that with regard to the former Scotiabank building, we defer rent for one year from the opening of the credit union, and we contribute $10,000 towards the setup of the credit union, and 50% of legal fees up to a maximum of $10,000.
You heard the motion from Counselor Turner, do we have a seconder?
I will second it.
Seconded by Counselor Toll, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And 19-7 was financial for the transfer station.
I would like to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation received from Island Wasting Recycling.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll, do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. That wraps up this meeting, our next regular council meeting, we scheduled for February 27th, we moved it up a week, just so everybody remembers, 7:30 here at the Community Center. Before we adjourn, I just would like to say we have two new young volunteers that are helping us tonight, and we'd like to thank them for all their efforts, it's great to see new people here.
I would move to adjourn.
Thank you very much, good night.